If I could ask everyone to take their seats, please. We will call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the School Board of St. Lucie County on Tuesday, March 14th, and it is my pleasure to welcome all of you here in the audience, as well as listening and watching via other opportunities. If you would, please stand with me for the pledge.
To the pledge that the United States of America tends to uphold towards change, one nation under God, indivisible, with a vision just for all.
And our treasure hunter pledge? As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. Thank you, and you may be seated. At this point, I will open the public hearing. The public hearing tonight is to receive public comment on the K-12 science instructional materials adoption. There's no action that will be taken by the board this evening. This is solely an opportunity for members of the public to address any issues or concerns they may have with the adoption. Are there any amongst us who wish to address this title? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation at our June 18th meeting, and the public hearing is now closed. We will move now to our special orders of business. Mr. Superintendent?
I'd invite our Chief Communications Officer, Lydia Martin, up, and I would invite the board to step in front of the dais.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Prince. Our first special recognition will...I'm going to ask Denise Rodriguez, our Executive Director of Teaching, Leading, and Learning, who will provide us with the information for this recognition.
Good evening, School Board Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. In October of 2019, St. Lucie Public Schools received a grant to partner with Florida Atlantic University to offer St. Lucie Public School employees the opportunity to earn a master's degree in school counseling. This grant allows each student in the program access to all of their books, course materials, at no cost. In addition, SWEL students only pay one-third of the tuition for their degree. Today, we gather to celebrate the achievements of Cohort Number Three with the presence of our esteemed graduates from Cohort One and from Cohort Two. At this time, could Cohort One please stand to be recognized? Cohort Two, can you please stand to be recognized? We were also able to add one additional cohort, so the last grant recipients to Cohort Four, please stand to be recognized. To date, the SWEL grant has allowed schools to hire 34 school counselors from the first two cohorts. This evening, we will honor 27 new graduates from the third cohort of the SWEL program with a certificate that they can proudly display. These graduates worked very hard to complete all the requirement of the school counselor program and plan to use their expertise to support students in St. Lucie Public Schools. Cohort Three, as I read your name, if you could come to the front to be recognized and to stay for a picture. Okay, the names are also up above. Kenosha Anderson Webb. Sybil Bell. Martha Collins. Rachel Cortez. Shelby Hardison. Laverne Jimenez. Kiana Mitchell. Renice St. Juust. Annetza Stromach. Edwina Taylor. Ross Tucker. Laura Van Duser. As you can see, this is a spirited group that has a wonderful support network with Diane White, April Minzy, and Dr. Valares, the head professor from FAU. If April Minzy and Dr. Valares could also come to be recognized in our picture at this time.
At this time, I'd like to invite Heather Rollin, Executive Director of Student Services and Exceptional Student Education, who will provide information about National Speech In her place, I'd like to invite Jennifer Carey to the podium.
Good evening, Chairman Holly, Superintendent Dr. Prince, and School Board Members. I'm Jennifer Carey, Program Specialist for the Speech and Language Impaired and Deaf and Hard of Hearing Programs, and this is my former student, Felina Maharaj. I first met Felina in 2015 when she entered Northport K-8 with an IEP for Speech and Language and Deaf and Hard of Hearing Services. Felina has a severe bilateral hearing loss, but due to many years of auditory amplification with hearing aids and therapy, she's an auditory-verbal communicator. Felina has been an exceptional student since day one. She has always strived to be the best at everything she does, including improving her speech and language skills. She is a delightful student to work with and a strong advocate for herself. Felina is currently a senior at Port St. Lucie High School with a weighted GPA of 3.2. Following her graduation with a standard diploma next week, she plans to attend IRSC and earn her associate's degree in nursing, and then continue her studies to become a registered nurse. She will now read the proclamation designating the month of May as National Speech Language Hearing Month.
Good evening, everyone. Today, I'm going to read you the National Speech Language Hearing Month of 2024 proclamation. Whereas many of us hear communication for granted, illness, or injury, make speaking and hearing a challenge for many Americans. And whereas by impairing communication, speech, language, and hearing disorders can limit academic achievements, social adjustments, and career advancements. And whereas audiologists and speech-language pathologists are professionals who specialize in the identification and treatment of communication disorders, conditions that affect millions of Americans. And whereas each year during the month of May, audiologists and speech-language pathologists throughout the nation make a special effort to inform, educate, and raise public awareness of speech, language, and hearing impairment. And whereas more than 42 million people in America, one in 10 million, 10 families have hearing, speech, or language impairments. And whereas most people with communicative disorders can be helped through medical or surgical treatment, hearing aids or hearing, and speech rehabilitation. And whereas with early diagnosis and proper treatment, most people with communication disorders can lead full and productive lives. And therefore, St. Lucie Public Schools proclaim May 1st through May 31st of '24 as National Speech, Language, and Hearing Month in the St. Lucie Public Schools. Thank you.
Just a quick note on the change on the printed agenda. The next special recognition, Business Partner of the Year, is being moved to June, so we will move forward with inviting Esther Rivera, Director of Student Services, to the podium to recognize this month's AIM for 100 attendance nominees.
Good evening, Board Chairwoman Holly, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. This past August, we tasked our school principals and their attendance teams to develop strategic action plans to combat truancy in our schools. I am extremely proud to say that we have accomplished that goal here in St. Lucie Public Schools. Our school leaders and their teams have worked diligently in ensuring that our students are in school every day. Our principals, APs, counselors, teachers, deans, social workers, and many more staff members have created positive incentive programs such as passing out goodies in car pickup lines, Dr. Prince, you're a witness to that, hosting fabulous full-course meals to students who have improved attendance, and even giving up their weekends to meet with students and families. Seven schools led the district in the largest increase of student attendance from last year to this year. As I call your school's name, principals and attendance teams, please come up and receive your recognition. Forest Grove Middle School. Fort Pierce Westwood Academy. And I saw Ms. Natta here earlier from Forest Grove...okay. From Dan McCarty, I apologize. Treasure Coast High School. St. Lucie Elementary School. Fort Pierce Central High School. St. Lucie West Centennial High School. In addition, one school in particular truly led this work by embracing their community and creating a culture that embraces students and families while improving attendance. Principal Jackson, you and your team are being recognized as the school with the most effective collaborative efforts for the 2024 school year. Congratulations.
Next, we're going to shift gears, and we're going to recognize our star recipients for this month. Our first nominee is Dr. Nancy Manessa from St. Lucie West Centennial High School. She is a ninth-grade ELA teacher, and she was nominated by a parent, Erin Keeler. Ms. Keeler writes, "Dr. Manessa has been a wonderful educator and role model for my daughter in her first year of high school. She's taken the time to know my daughter by name and all of her interests. She expects nothing but the best from my daughter and will give and critique her in a way that makes my daughter always want to give 100%. She goes out of her way to take an interest in her daily life and sports and books she's currently reading. She always makes my daughter feel so seen, and my daughter will even say, 'It is going to be such a good day because I have Dr. Manessa's class today.' She always just makes me feel so confident in myself, and I'm grateful that she has come into my daughter's life. So congratulations on this recognition, and thank you for making a difference." All right, congratulations. Next, we want to recognize Charles Moore, Speech Language Pathologist from White City Elementary, who was nominated by Jennifer Carey. Charles Moore is a devoted speech-language pathologist who plays a critical role at White City Elementary and within the district's private school evaluation team. His dedication ensures that the evaluation and IEP processes are seamless experiences for both parents and team members. His commitment to facilitating effective evaluations and IEPs contributes significantly to the success of our students and their families. His dedication was recently observed by a parent who wrote, "I would like to say how grateful I am for Mr. Moore. From day one, he has treated me with professionalism, and he genuinely cares. As a part of the assessment process, he took the time to ask me about my child. My child was important to him, and he wanted to know how best to interact with him during the assessments. I felt as if he truly did have the best individualized way to interact with my son." So congratulations, Charles Moore. school district. She also works with district assistive technology as an exceptional professional who dedicates herself to supporting other SLPs, teachers, and IEP teams to assist students with diverse needs. Her expertise lies in the field of Augmentative and Alternative Communication, AAC, which plays a crucial role in empowering students with severe speech and language difficulties. Her commitment to AAC and assistive technology ensures that all students will have the ability to express themselves and participate fully in their educational journey. So congratulations to Valerie.
All right, it's time for our monthly reports. I see Ms. Vickers, do you have a report tonight? No, well, we're glad to see you here. And I don't think Mr. Freeland made it. We had a meeting this morning. He realized he may have a conflict this afternoon, but wanted us to pass along his comments that he is very pleased with the way things are going, and we're glad to have him back in full stride after his recent surgeries. And Youth Advisory Council, in typical form for this time of year, our chairman that is retiring is in the middle of IB exams and wasn't able to get from school to here tonight. So I am...he asked me if I would pass along his comments for their last meeting. We had our last meeting this month, awarded first-ever graduation stoles for the Youth Advisory Council member seniors. But they ask if I would just pass along thanks to the district staff, especially those that have come and been an integral part of the meetings and every need they have brought forth. The district has met them and been more than happy to talk through items with them. It's been a very, very productive year. And the new year is in good hands, and I'm going to put her on the spot here. She probably didn't realize it, but our incoming chair, Lexi, if you'd stand, please, from Centennial High School, she will be our incoming chair for the Youth Advisory Council. And we are looking forward to all the gifts and graces you're going to bring forth for the Youth Advisory Council. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay. We will move then to our consent agenda. Board members, could I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Mr. Superintendent, can we have your recommendation?
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Before I take a motion on that, are there any items that board members wish to pull for separate discussion? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation.
So moved. I'll second it.
We have a motion by Mr. Kelly, a second by Dr. Mills. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. And we now will move to just a reminder, board members, that all of the informational reports are in there regarding our charter schools and their financial reports. Then we'll move, Mr. Superintendent, to your reports.
All right, before we get started, just something on the HR agenda I wanted to make sure that we recognized. We have a new Director of Alternative Education, Amber Menarchik, has been a longtime district employee. She's served a number of roles in the district and has done an amazing job here working with us in student services, and I'd like Amber to come up and say a few words. Ms. Menarchik?
Good evening, Chairwoman Holly, Board Members, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. I'm excited and honored to stand in front of you as the newly appointed Director of Alternative Education. Dr. Prince, thank you for the opportunity to serve the students, families, and staff of St. Lucie County. I'm beyond grateful, and I'm looking forward to helping and supporting all stakeholders as they navigate alternative education. Dr. Wilde, it's hard to imagine that one chance phone call from you nearly 25 years ago to teach American Sign Language at nearly 25 years ago to teach American Sign Language at St. Lucy West Centennial High School would have made such an everlasting impact on the trajectory of my life. But it truly has, and for that and so much more, I am beyond grateful to you for your guidance, your support, and your steadfast leadership. Bridget Hargadine, it's awkward because I know you're behind me. Where have the years gone? It feels like yesterday we were corralling children in the parking lot of Treasure Coast High School, planning family engagement activities, and you were gradually releasing the responsibility of scheduling the sixth graders at Southern Oaks Middle School. At each school and in every role, you have been the greatest mentor, role model, and friend. To the One Division Leadership Team, Heather Roland, Esther Rivera, Marcy Lucky, Michelle Gillard, and Donna Gill, thank you for making the district office feel like home and for welcoming me into your team. Jerry Early, Lauren Sweet, Kristen Landry, and Nikki Poole, thank you for being the greatest coaches, teachers, and friends as I embark on my new role in alternative education. You make all things possible. Marilyn Alviera, Flavia Jangle, Tara Guerin, and Diane Johnson, thank you for your assistance, support, and patience as I transition into this new role. And last, but certainly not least, to my husband, Thomas Menarchek, and my son Cash Menarchek, you are my everything. Thank you for always believing in me, encouraging me, and supporting me as I chase down all my dreams. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Menarchek, and I also want to thank your husband and little one there for sharing this wonderful opportunity and promotion with you, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the work that you're doing in alternative ed. So I just wanted to update the board on a couple of things, some recent events. I want to thank board members and also the business community that came out for the district's our PAC, the education, I'm not education either, our fundraiser for Protect Our Kids, which is for the half penny sales tax continuance or renewal. We had a huge turnout. I want to thank the principals that came out. Does support all of our construction and the renewal of every single building that we have in our district. Want to thank Remnant for hosting the event. And also want to thank Travis Leonard with Angie Pools for also being there and helping sponsor that. Specifically at Remnant, Brandon Noble and Brian Garcia. Want to thank our business partners and the folks that come out and support our community because they're truly doing some great work. We had the Law Day Art Contest with the Friends of the Law Library. We do have board members that show up at all these events. I want to thank our board members for continuing to show up and support our students and support the things that are happening in our community. The Treasure Coast Sports Commission Scholar-Athlete Awards was last weekend. Once again, we promote not just our fine arts, but also our athletics and any opportunity we have to shine a light on students that are doing great things. We're going to do that. With that being said, speaking of great things, the Education Foundation Scholarship Night was last week. Once again, I want to thank our board members for being there and a number of scholarships. I think 56 or 57 scholarships were given out at that event for students. It's a great opportunity for our kids, and I want to thank Tom Jones and the president of the Ed Foundation. Also, and this is really our students, and we've got some... I see students in the front couple of rows, and it seems like every single day you're taking a test now. A lot of students across the district are taking exams or tests into course exams. Today in particular, it was third-grade reading across our district that we're taking tests. And not just third-grade reading. Look at Dr. Jackson shaking her head, yes, yes. You're excited about those third-grade reading scores, aren't you? So we've got students that are taking... We literally finished upgrades three through 10 reading today. We've got a couple of makeups they're going to be giving throughout the week, but now we've shifted to math and the EOCs. And I just wanted to say something to students out there. My daughter took a reading exam today too at Centennial High, but I know all of our staff members have worked really hard to prepare our students for these assessments. And I also know how much pressure our students feel taking all of these assessments. And I just want to thank our students for all that you do because I know that you study hard and you work hard and you have jobs and you have lives. And to have to do this day in and day out can be a grind, but I just want to thank our students, I want to thank our principals, and I want to thank all of those that are school-based for the great job that they do. Board members and the public, next week are graduations. Board members, you have this with you. It's next Thursday and Friday at the fairgrounds. We're going back to our old stomping grounds, the fairgrounds, and I'm looking forward to seeing the public there. We've got a great story to tell, and this will be, spoiler alert, board, our eighth consecutive year of graduation rates exceeding 90%. And we only had three districts in the state that were able to say that, and St. Lucy County was one of them. And that's something to celebrate. And I'm going to say this, students, do you know what the last day of school is? May 30th. Not that you're counting. But also, May 29th and 30th are early dismissal days. We want to make sure that we end school on a high note and we're safe, secure, and everybody gets home okay. And with that being said, it's our last board meeting, so to speak, before the end of the year. So board members, once again, I want to thank you for all that you do for our students, for your collaboration with me and our staff, and I wish everybody a healthy and safe end to the school year. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Harold, do you have an attorney report?
No item, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate you being here. It's always good to have you with us. Board members, we have an action item before us. It is the approval of the School Board Attorney Legal Representation Agreement with Gray Robinson, specifically Mr. Scott Cole. I hope you've had an opportunity to review the contract, and I would entertain a motion to accept the contract as presented.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Miss, thank you, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Ingersoll, is there any conversation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five-zero. We will now move into our board member reports and comments, Mr. Ingersoll.
No report.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll, Dr. Mills.
I wanted to mention that one of our local churches, Bass Temple, the pastor is Robertson. Pastor Robertson happens to be the brother of our Teacher of the Year this year. And in his congregation, for Teachers Appreciation Month, they provided lunch to four of our public schools. I do not, I'm missing a public school, but I know they went to C.A. Moore, I believe, and gave lunch to all of the staff there. And then they, Westwood, right? They were at Westwood with all of the staff. And not just the teachers, but they provided lunch for everyone. So we wanted to recognize them. Forest Grove, they were at, oh, and Samuel Gaines, that's the school I was missing up here. And I happened to go to the Forest Grove luncheon, and it was very delightful to appreciate our teachers and support staff. Thank you so much, Bass Temple and pastor, for your willingness to do what you did. Also, the Education Foundation has adopted an island here. It's called Spal Number Eight Island. And our Indian River... And I was so excited to see this island that they've adopted. We are going to be able to use that with our marine and oceanography, our MOA program, where they will be going and doing some great things on that island. And outside of that, I just want to say thank you to everyone. You've worked so hard to help St. Lucy County Public Schools be successful. Thank you to our administrators and your hard work, as well as all of our district administrators and staff and support staff and educators. We just want to say, enjoy your summer. Many of you will be working, I'm sure, through the summer, but some of you will be able to relax and do a few fun things. And we say, please stay safe until we return.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Mr. Kelly, any report?
Yes, it is Teacher Appreciation Month, and I just want to say that you all are appreciated. Education is the foundation of our country. I look forward to the graduations next week, and no other report, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Richardson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I would like to also express my sincere appreciation for our amazing teachers and educators. While we recently celebrate Teachers Appreciation Week, every day should be a celebration of your dedication and invaluable contributions. Like a mother's multifaceted roles, your responsibilities are vast and demanding. A comic strip aptly illustrated this, depicting the need for about 12 to 13 people to fill in for a mother's various duties. Similarly, our educators wear numerous hats, going above and beyond in shaping young minds and lives. Recently, I had the privilege of speaking to a fifth-grade teacher who beautifully encapsulated the sentiments of our teaching community. She shared, "Not many people are blessed enough to actually get paid for their passion, but I am. There's nothing I'd rather do than teach." She was moved out of her classroom on special assignment, so she said, "I want to be in the classroom teaching my babies." That says a lot. I know she echoes the sentiments of our teaching community. Thank you, educators, for your commitment to St. Lucy County School District every single day. Enjoy a well-deserved and restful summer break. While we may not have designated days to honor our bus drivers, cafeteria workers, or maintenance staff, I want to express my sincere appreciation for each and every one of you every day. All individuals who contribute their efforts on any of our campuses holds my deepest respect and gratitude. You are truly the unsung heroes on the front lines, ensuring our schools function smoothly and providing essential services that support our students' well-being and educational experience. Your dedication, I'm talking to the bus drivers, the cafeteria workers, and the maintenance staff, your dedication and hard work often goes unnoticed, but they are invaluable to the success of our district. I celebrate and commend you for your unwavering commitment to our schools and community. May is also Mental Health Awareness Month, and this subject demands our utmost attention. Through a recent discussion with a community partner, I gained a new, greater perspective on the profound impact mental health has on our children. They have witnessed and experienced challenges that even mature adults may struggle to comprehend. We must delve deeper into understanding the root causes and ensuring appropriate provisions and policies are in place to support their mental well-being. I'm not saying that we don't have any. I'm just saying we need to look at it and just make sure that we are covering all the bases. Healing from mental health struggles take time, but with the right support and resources, our children can overcome and thrive academically and personally. Last but not least, sitting beside me tonight is Mr. Harold. But normally, it's Mr. Torcivia. And I just wanted to say to Mr. Torcivia, feel better, we're going to miss you, and thank you for your service to the board.
And thank you, Mr. Harold.
Thank you. And that's my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Richardson. Board members, we have no other business to come before us this evening, so we are adjourned.